We call these out, work session for Richmond City Council final legislative meeting to order. We have a pretty extensive agenda for the work session as well as for the regular docket part of the meeting. The official docket ordinances and papers that are before the committee, that part of the meeting will start at four o'clock. So if there's anyone here in regards to any of the papers that are before us, we will not be having that part of the meeting until four o'clock. Between the 2:30 up until four o'clock, we will be having a work session. And the agenda for that meeting will consist of a presentation from the council-appointed agencies as it relates to the budget request, captain recruitment project report, and the budget review planning, and our 2009 work plan. And then following that, if we finish before four o'clock, we'll take a break until four o'clock and come back with the public comment period as well as the other items that are on the agenda, which includes the meeting's and the ones we set up before us. Any questions before we get started? You're good? Okay, then... Okay, um, then with that, we're gonna start off with the work plan. And I'm going to start off with the CIP update, followed by the staff assignments. What's all this to Harris? Is that any of you?
Good afternoon, my first counsel, Mr. Adams. We suggested that we start with the council appointing agents, so that those departments can... Do you have any additions?
Alright, okay, alright, then we'll do that.
I believe you all have your handouts as requested. There should be two. One for the agencies listed at the city council, and then secondly, the agencies listed as council chief staff. But I'll start with the council budget.
Now, just a clarification. I had asked that this presentation be made to the committee. My understanding is that this is the presentation that was actually made to the administration of the mayor's office for this budget review, is that correct?
Yeah, the numbers, you see 2010, 2011 are the budgets as submitted to the mayor's budget department. Mayor's budgets, the budget department started budget preparation, I think it was around the beginning of December. As all agencies and departments are requested to do, we submitted requests to the budget department at that time. So this is as submitted. It's not, I wanna stress, this is not the mayor's recommendation as the server is what was submitted. So we're not real sure at this point what's gonna come back with the mayor's proposal. Pretty much, starting with the council. We submitted a status quo budget for 2010, 2011. The salaries you see in the first column are based on nine council members, eight council members and the president, and nine liaisons. Totally $712,000 in 2010 and no changes same as in 2011. Fringe benefits calculated as instructed by the budget department to a tune of about $230,000. On the operating side, council district funds budgeted at, what the request was at, same as this year, nine districts at $15,000 per district. And for your information, I have also, on the second page of this handout, included line items, your line items and the amount that was submitted. Planning and management services, 2010. That right now, it consists of a request for $40,000. We were assuming we would need some additional money for maybe the charter commission and some other special studies. So that's why the $40,000 is put there as a placeholder. And I will also stress, the charter commission has not requested any additional money. We're trying to look ahead in case there is the need for a consultant or any additional cost, especially when it comes to the writing of the report. The charter commission today does not request any additional funds. Also, as we did last year, not knowing what special projects may arise, we also, you know, that's available there as a placeholder. The other item of the planning and management item includes the lobbyist contract. The contract's a 12-month contract, $65,000 this year. We did bump it up to about $70,000. Next year anticipation, if there is a need. Not saying that we have a contract at that amount currently. We included $2,500 for council, we increased the $2,500 for the annual legislative sum that's down every fall. So that makes up the $115,000. For conferences and conventions, for planning purposes, we budgeted nine council members at $3,000 per council member. Here again, that's for planning purposes. It's also in line with what was done last year. And I wanna stress of this, council members have not spent down that budget in previous years and do not anticipate judging based on what I see this year that that's gonna happen. But for planning purposes, that's how we, that's how it was requested. We also have $2,100, $2,100 included because typically we get at least one request from a council liaison to attend NFBA conference. Typically, when we do, when we start a budget, we'll send out requests to staff and ask about the memberships and training and so forth, that they will be approved for in the coming year. Plan included for planning purposes. The next item, promotional publications. This primarily includes the contract with the idea station for the broadcast of council meetings. At $70,000 for the annual contract to broadcast the meetings. We also included $5,000 on this line item in anticipation. Here again, it's for planning purposes. In previous years, we've gotten the discussion, especially when the sister cities activities and things of that nature come around, and what gifts do we have to offer to visitors. So we included $5,000 for planning purposes if we had a need related to sister cities or visitors to the city on behalf of the city and city council. So that's where that fund is from. Under training, we included training at $900 per liaison for planning purposes. Totally $100, and we included $300 because typically we have to train folks on using the lobbyists in a box during the general assembly session. The other is outlined on your second page. Once again, of typical office-type general operating supplies and equipment, including postage, magazines, subscriptions, basically the Richmond magazine and the Richmond Times Express, these papers that comes through the office. We have general office supplies at $3,100, I'm sorry, $3,000. We have duplicating, $23,000. Memberships, these are the, we received a couple of membership requests from at least one liaison, and the sister cities dues annual membership is $900 per year. We've included a little amount for books because from time to time, we do get requests from council members and ordinance to request some literature in the office. If there is a need to use the cities, a city vehicle, we included $400 for daily rental. And then a contingency for any office maintenance. The computer and other equipment would include computer software and replacement of any technology equipment that'd be needed during the year. Going back to page one, under additional funding requests, something that is not included in this budget that I was made aware of later in the process is that we may possibly need $20,000 for, to make this contract for the new video equipment that was added to chambers this past fall. Those are the cameras and the equipment that you see over in this, in the video room. We may need to pay for that contract. There is some discussion, I think, between DIT and this department in terms of where that budget needs to place as well as need for them to review any contract that may need to be bad in terms of maintenance. Something else that's not noted here, we've also received information from the administration that the billing for our telecommunications billing is gonna come back to the departments. You may recall a couple of years ago, the billing for telecommunications, this includes your telephone and your BlackBerries, was sent to DIT for billing. We're told now that they may come back to the departments, but we're gonna have to take care of that billing. My assumption is that as the administration goes through the budget and figures out what their cost is and try to allocate, not departments gonna impact this budget as well. So that's information that I have. Some critical issues I wanted you all to, well, I don't know whether critical or some issues I wanted you all to be aware of. Unlike last year, the proposed request for 2010 does not include any funding for any projects such as the back-to-school project. I think you all also had funding for, I think it was fan patrol and a couple of other things that got added at the last minute to council's budget. Those things are not included in this budget. We were, we did receive information from the administration that there is the possibility of additional cuts, maybe at least as 10% of the budget. And if those, if that comes to fruition, those cuts are likely to be in places such as the district funds, planning and management, computer replacement, and I think I would add that less conferences and conventions as well. Okay, any questions on the dollars?
So, Ms. Cleaver, your budget that you submitted for 2010 totals is actually a reduction about 1% from last year. You had 1.5 last year, this one's about 4.
And this is the council agency.
Any other questions, Mr. Collins? So I'm gonna go to the words to what is presented to us.
And look, the other thing I've added here again is council's 2009, 2012 action plan. You did ask about those and those activities for the coming year. And so I would just point to that action plan. And to the extent that there are specific initiatives that need to take place on the council auspices, then something worth taking consideration.
You wanna highlight those?
Well, no, you, the making of four priority areas of anti-poverty. One which does involve the staffing, the anti-poverty commission. Now, if there's any costs related to that in terms of outside consultants or anything of that nature, that may be something that we would want to have funding for. And as I said today, the charter commission has not asked for any additional funding, but it's kinda hard to know. I, I, you know, make them aware that if they feel that there is a need, we need to know as soon as possible. The only other thing that comes to mind, if there is a cost related around visiting activities, none of that would be included in this budget unless, you know, there's some way that $40,000 that could submit in the request. And assuming, you know, this request is honored, like I say, we, the additional reductions is not a very... The next one, council chief of staff agency. This budget was submitted at full employment. There are 12 positions. And I would stress that one of the positions is vacant. It has been vacant the entire year, probably more than a year. That is position of director of legislative services. And I'm not recommending filling that position. But I am recommending that that position be reallocated to another, to a lead position, but at a lesser salary than what is originally planned with the director of legislative services. So if we, if we are able to maintain the 12 positions, the 12 positions are included in these numbers. So we have salaries and friends, and I think that goes on the third page. The one chief of staff, four policy analysts, three fiscal analysts, one public information manager, one administrative project analyst, one executive assistant, and then this vacant position. In terms of the operating expenses on the, for planning and management services. $7,000 include... We just, for any, we typically try to have at least one staff retreat during the years. We had $2,000 for that, and we had any special publications for $5,000. The idea was to use the public information office to update the annual and quarterly report that's done. Well, we do a quarterly report, we've done a year-end report that's typically been produced in-house. And so the thinking was looking ahead, if we possibly want to update and upgrade that report. So that's just $7,000. $7,000. Do take services here again is the share of the leased machine and the supplies upstairs on the, on the third floor. Parking, there's parking for six staff members who park outside of city hall in a parking lot across the street. And then under other, there are a number of things listed here. If you flip with me to the third page, you see the total $65,000, 575 operating outlined by each line item. I submitted, and on that third page, you'll see what I, as I submitted, I do have a proposal to make a change there. And that change would be where I have memberships. We had 2085, we do have a staff that belong to a number of organizations. My proposal is to revise that line item and to combine the membership line item, the, reduce the conference line item, and to make available to this staff $900 per staff person for a combination of training memberships as well as we have provided for the liaisons. So it would be $900 per person. It could be used for professional memberships or training, which is comparable to what we have in council's budget for each liaison. So that's one change that I can propose, that we reconfigure it from the alternative devices, but not change the bottom line. So, request included 12 positions, one currently vacant, and I'm proposing that that position be reallocated. And also does not include any telecommunications costs from BIT. This is a, it's about $218,000 increase from 2009 to 2010. And it's primarily driven by the salaries of full employment and filling vacant positions as well as the adjustments we've already received in 2009. Critical issues, if there is a 10% reduction, if there is a 10% reduction across the board, and the last information I got that we would probably lose the vacant position and an additional 10% may be requested. And if that does happen, it would result in a decrease of one of our filled positions. Because there certainly is not enough money in operating costs to do a 10% reduction. So it would result in a reduction of an additional position, which would bring staffing level down to 10 instead of 10. Currently, the chief of staff position does work in two in full capacity serving as the providing legislative services oversight as well as the other administrative duties of the offices. Which is why I request the reallocation of existing position to an appropriate title such as lead analyst or manager of research and analyst or some other appropriate title which would be determined in concert with human resources. Questions on that one? Okay, in terms of the outcome and performance measures, I listed four on page, on the second page. Number one being to provide staff support to the Richmond Charter Review Commission. And the measure would be charter change recommendations for 2011 general assembly. The question we was asked is how does it relate to councils to go and how does it support council's priorities? Our response is that this would help to ensure legislative autonomy of city council to authorize policy consistent with the priorities. So it kinda cuts across all of council needs. Number two, to complete a study to determine feasibility of city adopting outcome-based budgeting and some method to provide key city service consistent with priorities. Here again, this is by resolution, and completing that resolution we would be focused on. How does it help council? It helps to ensure a method to track the progress toward the achievement of council goals. Number three, to provide staff support to a special policy advisory team to develop strategies and propose legislation to city council to address these reduced poverty and concentration of poverty. Here again, and measuring listed as a functioning policy team in place to provide recommendations to council. And it, of course, supports council's priority area of anti-poverty. Number four, I listed to develop and refine the targets within council's priority areas. And as I stated, I think at Monday's meeting, we recognized that the priority areas and the targets and the goals provided still need a bit more refinement. And I would suggest the staff to continue to work on refining those targets and provide recommendations to council for consideration and across all of the poverty areas, I'm sorry, all of the priority areas of council. And I won't go through it, but I've attached additional goals at the end of this document. You also asked us to provide recent accomplishments, and I highlighted, I think, four. The development and implementation of the legislative pre-filing process as requested by council, it's been completed. The study on combining the two auditors' office has been completed. Upgrade of council chambers video equipment after many years has been completed. And we continue to coordinate, coordinate with the council's work session retreat as well as the general assembly legislative process. So those are just the few that I included in the handout to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I think I handed out a similar document.
Yes.
That should be at your desk. Pretty much the same format as what I basically just went over. Showing the actual budgets, I guess, for the last three fiscal years to the left and then in the highlighted parts is what we submitted to the budget office for 2010 and 2011. Showing, with the bottom line showing some increase in the overall budget amount to a ton of additional $100 and $29,000 and change. The key areas under the operating budget where we had put some increases in was the outside legal services, $180,000 there. Increase in cost of votes and online electronic legal research like Westlaw and Lexis. Membership dues, if you look back over the past three fiscal years, you can see now that's kinda gone down. But it is a somewhat of a recruitment tool. We have some fixed costs, I would say, for dues. You know, there's the dues for the community state law that we have to pay. In addition to that, we are members of the local government attorneys association in their offices, and then there are specialty law associations that some members would like to join from time to time, like the junior association of defense attorneys. And a number of these associations do offer specialized training and specialized continuing legal education seminars that are very, very helpful to us. Having said that, on training, we did increase that line item as well. Advertising for both recruitment and there are other times when there are required legal advertising that the department might have a squabble, we'll go ahead and pay it if we're in a time crunch, land for language papers and sometimes things like that as well, something special that might come along. The total FTEs is 26.75. I do currently have two vacant attorney positions. One is, one's a full-time position occasioned by the death of a colleague in the back of the summer. And then another half-time attorney position that I don't think we ever field that may be up for grabs for budget cuts. We did, toward the tail end of last calendar year, make a request for waiver for that hiring freeze. You know, hiring freeze went into effect sometime last fall. We requested a waiver from that, and I think around mid-January of this year... We requested a waiver from that, and I think around mid-January of this year, I got a favorable response back. So we kind of argued the process of recruitment for that one full-time vacant position. In terms of outcomes and performance measures, you know, the questions that were asked is to justify, I guess, how are the services that we provide support ongoing council's priorities, as well as, I, from time to time, we'll remind the council, we don't just work for the council, we work for the entire city. So a large part of our time is devoted toward the administration as well. We do, in general, provide legal services and legal advice to everyone. We have some specialty programs, the delinquent tax sale program, which I think also supports some of the community development and economic development priorities of city council. In addition to collecting delinquent taxes, a spin-off benefit of that program is that we sometime make those properties available to either the housing department or some of the other community development corporations, so that they can rehabilitate the properties, get them back on the tax level, and eliminate light in the neighborhood as well. So in that regard, that's a program that would support some of the council priorities. Likewise, we have another program that's run out of a special fund budget necessary to do non-homestic relations court union, where I have four attorneys and some support staff. And while I cannot directly correlate their efforts with supporting council's priorities, I will say that a large part of their job is to ensure that the courts do not order the Department of Social Services to provide any type of services to juveniles that are not reimbursable. So they're carefully looking over, objecting to certain things to make sure that the right box is checked by the judge, so that, to the extent that the city is spending monies to provide services for juveniles, those expenditures are reimbursable. And that certainly frees up money in the general fund for other purposes. Under recent accomplishments, I listed a few things, but as some of you who participated in the performance evaluation for the city attorney, I did submit a much, much longer longitudinal of the types of accomplishments that we have achieved over the past year. Now I'd be happy to make conscious of that available as well. Again, they're not going to necessarily correspond with priorities that are established by a council, but I think you will agree that they do be inured to the benefit of the entire city. Some of the tax assessment cases that we've been successful with, the sale of the Marriott Hotel, female reimbursement. We were involved with contingency planning for the renter's law during the past fall elections. We've been involved with any number of development agreements, the Hoffel Building against both Richardson Stage has been a huge time consumer, and, you know, we've been intimately involved with that. We facilitated the transfer of the Coppin Center property by deed over to the city. Negotiated a lease and franchise agreement for the city's private partner to operate the Coppin Center for 14 years. We also did RFP last year to select and hire a bond council for the city. So any number of projects that we've been involved in, I think, and directly supported by the council's priorities. That's pretty much all I had to offer. I'll be happy to answer any questions that members might have.
Let me ask you one question. The budget for, how well do we do this year with the outside legal services? Do we go over budget with that this year?
No, we go under budget. And I will say, the primary reason that I ask for all that amount is just the uncertainty. You know, if you look back at the actual expenditures for the past three fiscal years, you'll see how it started out at $130,000, it went down to $28,000, and then back up to $100,000. A lot of that had to do with the uncertainty of who was going to pay for outside council. A lot of it had to do with some of the lawsuits between the council and the mayor, previous mayor, and the uncertainty as to whether those expenses were going to be paid by risk management, or whether they were going to come out of my office.
You're anticipating some of the costs of the last year or so to impact this year's budget as a reason why there is such a significant increase in your submitted budget?
I guess I'm saying that I'm uncertain as to whether we're going to be required to pay a larger share of outside council expenses from my budget as opposed to risk management.
So if this budget is not adopted by the administration, that would be an area where clarification may be needed.
Yes, ma'am. And we're also, like Ms. Weber said, that this, what you see in the highlighting was what's submitted, but we have also participated in meetings and efforts, meetings with the budget office representative, to try to come up with a 10% cost per board reduction as well. You know, we haven't seen the final results yet, but this is what was submitted early on.
All right, yeah, we respect the fact that what you've submitted and what we ultimately see, we have nothing like this, but it's just, I think it's good information for the committee to at least know what was submitted to administration for these five minutes going in, and having a vision for that.
I just want to make a, come on. Did you say you get both Lexis and Westlaw?
No, I took both of them, all as an example. Currently, we're using Lexis. We have been recently approached by Westlaw, who certainly use Westlaw in the past. We try to make them compete against one another, to get the best possible. We don't have both, no. That would certainly be wasteful if we had both.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Suriyan, for mentioning. And then Clark?
Good afternoon. I think we have before you the budget summary for the city clerk's office. Presently, we're at seven full-time positions. We have a total of eight allocated to the office, however, we not had one of those positions filled for number of years. I want to draw your attention to, I guess, the yellow column for fiscal year 2009. We have asked that one of the positions, the council administrator project analyst position, is a position that was previously held by Lina Peters and is now held by Erica Glassford. We asked that that position be transferred permanently into the city clerk's office for the council chief of staff. As you'll note on the summary sheet, the bulk of our budget is spent in advertising. That's not really something we have any, you know, discrepancy over, any power over, or any ability to change, as that's mandated by law with regard to how required to advertise papers that are for the council and to notify the public of the public hearing days for those ordinances. Also, when you see the membership dues, I want you to think that that's us, that's actually you, us paying the P. Court Council and the city to belong to, I believe, the National League City, their membership.
To what?
NLC. And I believe that's around $52,000, so that's pretty much, that's all of that money that's in membership dues. That's not anything that we actually are attending in the city clerk's office, of With regard to the addition of funding requests, the, again, the issues that we're always concerned about are going to be advertising. With the potential city charter review commission making recommendations for changes to the charter, we'll have to advertise those. So the fiscal year 2010 budget that was submitted included about $5,000 deduction. So what we're asking is that that money be put back into the city clerk's office, because actually, for the last couple of years, we were over budget in advertising. A lot of things impact our budget that we have no control over in terms of advertising. If papers are amended, those have to be re-advertised. If they're supposed to come before one meeting and then that changes, we have to advertise that. So again, that's just something that we don't have any control over, so we're asking that that money be put back into the budget. Also, under additional funding requested, item number two is just something I put in there, because I think that something needs to be done to that lounge. That's just my opinion. It might be in terms of making it more, I guess, not so much comfortable, but a lot of people use it, a lot of people are in and out of that lounge, so just to put that before council, as to just sort of spruce that up a bit. Also, the third item is something a bit more concerned, and that's the way we store our records. I met with the deputy city clerk, and I met with the state library this past Tuesday, and we also, in that meeting, we also had the city's librarian, and all of us were meeting to talk about the way we store the records. And that's pretty serious to us in the clerk's office, because if they're not storing correctly and something happens, we lost the official record for the city. And I'm very concerned about the potential for damage. If there's a disaster, we're not properly in position to preserve those records. So I talked to them about potentially transferring some of those records to the Library of Virginia. They have better facility to store the records if there's an event of fire, water damage. They have all kinds of, I guess, procedures, so that there'll be, if not any damage, less damage to those records. Something that we're not equipped to deal with here on-site. And of course, we have, we also, of course, will always have some of those records on-site. There's also the potential if one place is damaged, hopefully, the other place will be intact. So we sort of have double protection there with regard to the city's official records. I'm concerned I haven't really made a decision about that, and the only reason I haven't decided is because it may be a delay in terms of citizens, if they come into the office wanting a record versus us being able to get it immediately, it may be a one- or two-day delay. So I'm concerned about that, and so I have to, you know, just hash that out a bit more. But that may be something that we need you to consider in terms of our record storage. With regard to our goals and objectives, you see those before you. Some of the things that we believe that have been hot points of our past recent accomplishments would be the launch of SharePoint, although it's not, you can't use it externally. I think it's a great site in terms of housing our information, all of the documents that come before council, they're ready at your fingertips. We've also revamped the boards and commissions website to improve agency oversight. That's utilized quite a bit. More citizens are actually applying for appointments and reappointments online, so that helps the process as well. We, I believe, we certainly provided increased standing committee support to the various standing committees by ways of, we've now created summary reports, actual reports. We provide to give the information to you as the chairs, shared before the formal council meetings. We assisted in the process of setting up the charter review commission, along with the council chief of staff's office. We began this year digital recording and uploading of the audio from all these. I don't know if that's an accomplishment, depends on who you ask, but the citizens enjoy it, and actually, we get a lot of calls about that. And we tell them, we don't have any control, we didn't make it up, this is what happened. If they ask for it, we send it to them. So, or at least our message where they can get it. So we think that's a hot point as well. In terms of providing information to the public with regard to what occurs in council meetings, we've also worked with the fire department to develop an evacuation plan physically challenge citizens in the chamber who attend our meetings. We've also situated a vendor for sign language providers in the event that someone wants to attend a meeting, worked with the public information manager, as well in providing better access for all citizens. We created a plan that was previously approved by the former council president to manage disruptive speakers during meetings. And again, we've improved the board and commission, the whole process, although it had a few growing pains, we believe that it is indeed an improved process.
Okay. All right, anyway, I think we've got, we've got, we don't have a chance to look at these, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm looking at the quad and trying to finish what we're doing. So basically, what we really want to get is the main emphasis, so let me get the submitted budget and so forth, so I think that pretty much covers that. Any questions, Ms. Tomlinson?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Ms. Tusk?
Good afternoon, I have a chair. The city assessor's office.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Tusk?
I thought that was previously on page.
We don't have copy of those in the office.
Oh, I asked for that. Oh, here we go. Ms. Harris, it's fast enough. I know time is precious right now. The commission of the...
Basically, what we wanted to focus really on is the submitted budget. We will look at the accomplishments and so forth, and if there are any questions and so forth, those we will give back, as the honor of the, just kind of stay focused on the budget part. And the critical issues, you know, the questions really on this front page.
Okay. The city assessor's office, I have down here that we consist of 40 full-time employees. That's actually been revised at this point down to 39. And that comes about from the budget cut that occurred in October, I believe, September, October last year. As part of our 1.4% reduction, we surrendered one vacant position out of our front office. So the salaries is probably overstated by about $35,000. Major operating monies, and by the way, we're, as I said in prior years, we're by 92% salary in our department, so we're operating on funds beyond that, about 8% of our total budget. The primary operating monies come from planning and management services. That number is up this year, but that's actually a reallocation of monies that administration was spending in other areas that they've now assigned to our budget, and they're listed below these numbers. Auto rental, a big part of our time and expense is in the field work that we do with the 25 personnel appraisers who have to go out on a regular basis. We are still holding, through that shuffling of car ownership several years ago, we're still holding ownership of three vehicles, because they were in good condition, but older, I expect the city will phase them out in the next couple of years. Other than that, we run from the fleet. So that cost runs $800 a week or more for the people who have to use that service. Postage is a fixed expense that increases every year, and most of that money is sent out on a couple of surveys that we have to do each year, and then mailing of the notices that are done in January of each year. The training cost, which is currently listed at $21,775, is a recertification process for the, for our staff members. Twenty-five of the staff members are professional appraisers who have to go through an annual recertification program. And we take advantage of a state program that's operated each summer when we go to a university to reduce costs of our time, to save monies in that area. Revenue, the only revenue we produce in our office would be copy costs, and our share of the monies that come in, we have applications, which is decreasing. I think as of last week, should, I guess. We have like 50 applications filed this year, where in Oakland, we would have about 250 at this time. So we're seeing a significant change in that area. Additional funding requested, as I said, this money actually was spent in other areas and has been reassigned to our budget. We do a... We do a flyover of the city every couple of years. And this is digitized and placed into our pictometry program. And it's used by police, fire, community development, public works, and ourselves. And probably anybody who wants to use it actually has available to, which gives you that overhead of a thousand or so feet, you know, a visual of the whole city, which for our benefit saves a lot of time to going out in the field. And some questions can be answered right off of the aerial photographs. And that's not the total cost, that's just the cost the city assigned to us at ten thousand dollars. The GIS one-time licensing fee, we use a preparatory program, R-Q, that the city is contracted with. And we've gotten to the point where so many people are using it, they have to go out and buy new licenses. So they've told us, the administration has told us that their GIS department that we need to purchase our own licenses this year. And that's at seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. We have a database program called Profile, preparatory also. And we have an annual cost attached to that. Until last year, DIT was paying for that cost out of their budget. They've now assigned that expense to us. And that money is estimated to be approximately forty-eight thousand dollars cost for the year. Would you like to discuss the performance measures?
Any questions? Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, I may have missed a presentation, I apologize. But in the planning and management services, you're jumping up from thirty thousand to fifty-one thousand. What was that line item?
The increase in that, in that cost comes from the additional funding requested down below, the ten thousand dollars for the aerial flyover.
Okay, so it's a plus seventeen.
Yeah.
Seventeen, okay.
All right. Normally, that money is used as a catch-all for, as Norman mentioned, we're getting sued a lot lately. We use that money for our deposition costs.
That's a good thing.
I guess we're getting better.
Depending on who you are. And the forty, where's the forty-seven six seventy-one show up then? If you've got the additional funding requested.
It's actually a separate line item in the budget, it just didn't show it.
Okay.
That's personal.
All right.
Other than that, there are, are no delays.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
How are you? Okay. Basically, the budget didn't change much from two thousand nine to two thousand ten. However, the components of that budget changed. Wouldn't they think that it would sink that jump in salary cost? That is because we had reorganization in our office. And then we had the council who drawn bedding of the salaries last year. And they'll be hired investigators. So that is a combination of that. Planning and management, last year, city council put in our budget for special study, like police study, ACL software, school staffing study, and so on and so forth. And that planning budget, we still anticipate that we might have consulting cost for the, for the year two thousand ten. Again, we don't know about which project we're going to be using. But some of the projects is like looking at information system security and information system strategy for the city. And those are the kind of projects that we possibly would be looking. Our training cost, traditionally, we are required by our governmental auditing standards to provide forty hours of continuous professional education to every auditor. And we didn't have enough money in the previous year. So that meant about ten thousand dollars. Plus, we have hired investigators and they were special training needs. The other expenses include all miscellaneous expenses. If you notice that special reserve account of eighty-seven nine A, that was non-personnel cost of investigators in IG's office. That has been merged into this other. And this other expenses also include seventeen thousand five hundred in the license fee for ACL software that we require them to install. This is going to be annual cost for our department. The new budget also includes about nineteen thousand dollars for equipment and field supplies for the investigators. And we are also requesting a vehicle for the investigators. So basically, that's what the budget is.
Okay. The, on the bottom part of the paper, you have salaries in fringe at two-hundred-and-twenty-seven. Is that in addition to the one...
No, no, I mean, that is, that shows the difference.
Oh, okay.
That shows the difference, it's just an explanation.
Okay, okay, okay. And in the other category, from thirty-eight to a hundred and one?
Yeah, the eighty-seven thousand dollars that IG's office, non-personnel expenses, that has been rolled into the other expenses.
All right, thank you. Who's next?
Good afternoon, Malala Chair members of the finance committee. Staff has prepared a report for you for a CIP update for the acquired ten CIP budget. On January twenty-seventh, staff submitted sixty-nine projects to the mayor's CIP team for their review, full inclusion in the mayor's FY-ten CIP budget. Out of the sixty-nine projects, approximately ten of those have already been completed with projects that...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Harris. John Farner, who are we are?
Okay, so we have the open, um, the spreadsheet with the...
We can start page one of the, one that says finance committee. Last year, the budget thing was session. There's little points right at the top of the CIP update that speaks to the CIP. The spreadsheet just lists all the projects that were submitted.
And the spreadsheets are on the...
Start on page three, the spreadsheet starts. Four to five districts. Staff, staff submitted sixty-nine projects, approximately ten of those have already been completed with projects like stormwater drainage, some other things that administration were able to work on prior to submitting the budget. Administration did submit their budget to, CIP team did submit their budget to the mayor last Friday. He is, he is currently reviewing of that, he's currently reviewing that budget. It was supposed to be recitation by the budget department on the CIP to the planning commission on Monday that just passed. However, they asked for a extension of the planning commission to March twenty-sixth. Have not seen, have not seen any, well, planning commission hasn't approved that, but that's what they asked for.
Yeah, they still plan to present us with this budget on twenty-seventh, but right?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Go ahead, just one by major.
Okay, so it's going to the planning commission?
Well, the CIP has to be presented to the planning commission prior to presenting it to city council.
So it was not presented to the planning, to the planning commission at the last meeting?
Right.
It's later until...
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's what they asked for.
Basically, we're, we're meeting next one of this, we follow, I think, I think.
Twenty-sixth is Thursday.
Twenty-sixth is Thursday.
Twenty-sixth is the same day with the planning commission presentation.
Presentation.
So they got to make the planning commission presentation that's the same days, was you saying?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And some things just to point out, the administration is looking at reforming the way they propose the CIP from what they did last year. Last year, if you remember, under the, under the transportation projects, they actually listed all the streets by fiscal year and where they were doing those projects at. Because that changed so dramatically in the course of the year, you know, the society against that and just did a lump sum, just showed a lump sum payment and just list the description of what those projects, what that, I'm sorry, what that were included. So you will not see the streets broken out like they were last year in the proposal here.
Okay, so the report that we have before is a, a cubicle to report of all of the CIP requests that was presented to the administration.
Correct.
Okay.
There were, there were a number of other projects that I can provide that to the, to the committee if they need me, but those projects were already included in the mayor's budget, so I include those in this spreadsheet.
Okay. All right, and so, um...
The, the, what's the, I mean, this is color coded, I see yellow, I see green.
There's actually a legend on page nine.
Okay, that's like, yeah. Okay. Not CIP, but any... Okay.
And not CIP, I just said, thank you.
All right, I'm with you.
I'm really moving through this and I may have just missed it. Where is the fan lighting project?
The fan lighting project, the project is already currently in the budget. Sorry, it was in last year's budgets, which is a continuation.
It's not an addition.
Right.
It's all...
Okay, so, um...
And a minute, just, the CIP committee did submit a number of these recommendations to the mayor. They only left out a very short, a very, I'm sorry, a very few of them. I don't have the list, but they submit, I asked them, that's what they're unable to provide to. But once we see the budget on the twenty-sixth, on the twenty-eighth, we should have a way to understand it.
We never do. Except that this time we have the list of everything that was submitted. So we at least have it all in one, one place, so it'll be easy for us to determine what is and what isn't on the twenty-sixth, right? It's it. It's just a request. It's like Christmas time in your house, Mr. Tyler. I'm service it, you. It's real clear.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Harris.
Chairman, members of the committee, Madam President. On behalf of the council chief of staff, I want to wish you a joyous and happy budget season.
Oh, why don't you just hold yourself? Thank you very much.
And...
Everyone do make sure that you all enjoy it equally as...
We are thoroughly enjoying it. And as the first gesture, we had you have in front of you, you have your presence from your chief of staff, a nice bound folder for you to keep all of your budget presentations. We have, in the training, we have charged all the azons to be responsible for making sure that your stuff is kept in your folder and that you can put your hands on it and everybody. That is our present to you.
And there will be no papers that come to us and then we have free holds in the, right?
In the future.
From us?
In the future.
From the, from the council chief of staff, leading to budget, they will have free hold punches. Now, what administration gives to you, I cannot promise.
Okay, well, we probably need some hole punches in the chamber, so we can use these things.
We can organize that.
That'll be, thank you. Yeah, we can donate it from somebody, don't create new charge.
Well, I'm sure one of the district, one of you will be glad to donate that from your district.
Mr. Harris, yes, when you like.
I'm sure, well, we had a very, we had a training session for all the councils, appointees and their staff. Very productive training, not going in depth about that. But just for your information, in your, in your budget worksheet section pages, ten and eleven, what we've done is taking the standing committee work assignments for policy analysts. And then we've also put right beside the fiscal analyst, so we can see which departments are assigned to the council chief of staff. Every analyst has budget duties as of, as of now. The way it's going to work is, once the budget is delivered, the fiscal analyst will do the trend analysis and do the numbers and do the key financial questions. The policy analyst will then take the ball, run and do a narrative for council in terms of key issues in those budgets and program issues. And then we're going to compile all of that into a nice, clean workbook for you. Hopefully, we'll have that available for you the first of April at your organization development. So you will have all of your staff analysis in front of you before, before the, the actual work sessions begin. And that'll help, we believe, will also help you with that. So there you can see, we're also going to communicate that to the administration so that they know, you know, until it comes up in a department, who's the analyst assigned to those departments, so they can help address any questions. We forwarded to you via email yesterday and knowing that you read everything in depth. We sent you a copy of the proposed work session schedule, it was on page twelve and page thirteen. What staff did tentatively for each week was rather than try, it's really hard to tie down departments right down here with everything, they're kind of preoccupied with the mayor's budget. So what we recommended was, where each week to just list which departments that were requested for that week. And then what we're going to do is, if this, these lists are okay with you, then we want to forward that to the CAO with a letter from the council chief of staff and to schedule those specific departments. Just to walk you through very quickly, the recommendation of the chair, Saturday, April fourth, having a public information form specifically to give the community some, some upfront discussions and education about the budget prior to council leader beginning to do any of his work sessions. Looking at that, tentatively to include an overview of the budget similar to what we gave, gave the council and staff in terms of the components of the budget and help the citizens see how to walk through the various pieces of the budget. Also, a discussion about the revenue trends and projections and the key critical issue regarding like state financing, those types of things. And then the biggest piece that just been open question answers and comments, or citizens who come in to simply ask questions to the state, whatever, if they want to, without, you know, being in a kind of forum. We're anticipating that, looking, we got to confirm, possibly doing this at the police academy because they have a nice meeting space there and it's a little more, you know, open to the community. In terms of the scheduling, other thing we wanted to, so you can see, let's look at week two. These are the things we anticipate having, map or analysis and trends, which will be done by the chief of staff, CIP review, debt management, risk management, review of non-departments. We'd like the general GRC to come in very first. We're trying to kind of preemptively pick the big, the big ticket issues, the days that we've got problems with based on prior budget, prior use budget and current things going on, we got to put them kind of up front. And also looking at the council priorities, trying to bring those up front as well. Economic development, community development, and community development block grant. That paper, if you recall, it is a specific paper for authorization for CDBG in addition to the budget. And normally, that goes to land use. But in looking at the schedule, if we wait till land use, do it in April, it would be hard pressed to get council amendments in, in time for this public hearing for CDBG has to be done with all amendments. So we're requesting that, that community development bring the... So we're requesting that, that community development bring the CDBG to the finance committee, just kind of give an overview, and then we can report back to the, uh, to the council, and if, you know, the president so desires for it, still go to land use, because we've already given some upfront kind of discussion for the council members as to what's in the CDBG. Uh, parks in the rec, and then of course council agencies, executive offices, and the tax rate. Uh, we contacted the city attorney, knowing that the committee, uh, is scheduled based on the work schedule we had originally, uh, suggested wants to actually have a dialogue and actually vote on a recommendation with regard to the tax rate papers. Uh, those papers are on the docket, on your agenda for today, and so we asked the city attorney, well, if the, if the committee wants to continue those papers and actually vote on them, do their recommendation in a work session, is that something we can do? And they said, yes. So all we need is, when you get to your finance standing committee today, when those items come up, uh, for review today, is to simply have a motion on your committee and a vote to have a special meeting on Thursday, April ninth, to actually consider the tax rate papers. So that will give you, that will give you some time to look at the general fund before you even begin to look at those tax rate papers. Uh, that's week, so week, so that's week two. Week three, Richmond Public Schools, Human Services and Social Services, General Services, uh, IT, Public Works, Cure, uh, Police, Fire, Sheriff, Economic Office, Attorney, uh, we suggest. Uh, we've also included in the schedule, uh, so that we make sure we don't cross the boundaries of other standing committees. Those standing committees are listed in these work schedules as well, so as to make sure we don't interfere with their work. Uh, tentatively, uh, what we're recommending is that by Thursday, April the sixteenth, we will have pretty much done most of the presentations and most of the discussions about major issues, uh, which would then really give, uh, the committee in the last week an opportunity to just really go through stuff and really talk about, and also look at all the amendments that are given on the second team, so that by the twenty-third, the committee can have its, uh, final review recommendations to the full council by the twenty-seventh, which is then, uh, the next, the next council official meeting.
Okay, uh, I just want to, um, reemphasize something, I guess, just for the sake of the committee, um... The special meeting that we are recommending that we have on the ninth, we would make a rec, and then out of that committee, we would make a recommendation to the full council, which was a review on the, the, whatever that...
The thirteenth. Yes, council needs to acquire that all papers, uh, you know, considered, have some recommendation on them. Then you would officially make your recommendation on the ninth, and then the full council would vote on it for the tenth.
Alright, and the other, um, piece is that the, the recommended, uh, departments that are being proposed at the end of this week, uh, the actual schedule of those will be determined once the, the administration will let us know what the lineup is getting done.
But just maybe, if you agree with what's, what's projected in terms of the work schedule of the departments selected, uh, will be draft, this is, we will be setting a latitude. You've already talked to the CEO, and he's already on orbit, that just maybe we need this done within a week, so that by the time you come back for organizational, the committee probably did it earlier, but we hope to know later that organizational development, personally, we will have.
So we really need for the committee to pay close attention to the recommended, uh, departments that we're considering for week two, week three, um, and... And make sure that that lineup feels right to you, uh, because we really would like to vote on it today so that the staff can proceed to send a letter to the administration, so they can begin to be responsible to the schedule, and we can also block this time off on our schedule, so we have reserved those kinds of work sessions. Uh, so it's, it's really important that we take a little bit of time and pay close attention to those. I especially, um, feel like the first, the week number two, um, that begins on the sixth of April, uh, that we have, you know, the CIP, this is one of those budgets that always get slammed at the end of the, uh, budget cycle, and we don't, by that time, we don't give adequate time to it, and it also is one of those budget areas that we tend to, as you can pretty soon tell from what we already submitted to the department, that many of them are in the CIP, so that's one of the reasons why this week brought up front on the budget. Um, having the council agencies that have made their presentations today, this should make it reasonably easy for us to get through that section as well. Any other questions or comments as it relates to the lineup that we need to talk about, or recommendations, Mr. Tyler?
Uh, thank you. I just, I'm looking at the lineup, and basically what I'm seeing is we'll be doing thirty-minute clips with each one of these departments, so basically, we're gonna need to have our stuff together, so to speak. And at the same time, do, do the, uh, departments understand that I don't want to get an overview of how well they've done for the past twenty years in the first thirty minutes, and then it's maybe one minute of, of financial question. I mean, they understand, they're coming in, and we're gonna be prepared if the budget can go out.
If you look, if you go back to page one, uh, what we're recommending is a twenty-minute presentation from the department with very specific kinds of items, and as we said, the chief of staff will have done most of the financial analysis, and so you will have both our analysis and you'll have the department's presentation. We didn't want to revurge to team numbers, because we live already high if we do the numbers and issues and within the budget. So with the expectation, uh, of trying to identify, uh, some value add, as, as, as Ms. Robinson says, uh, what is the, what is the value add of these presentations, kind of outline what we think, uh, those, those, uh, presentations should look like, uh, so that everybody comes in knowing what, which, what, uh, what help the committee, and not limiting themselves to not just general fund, but for every department, every, every part of the budget, internal service, special revenue, anything that that particular department has authority over, we expect them to be able to address, uh, those issues.
My, my concern is, is that you're giving them twenty minutes to present, ten minutes to for Q and A. My gut reaction is twenty's gonna turn into twenty-five, and we're gonna have five minutes for Q and A before we get the next department slammed into us. Uh, my suggestion would be is that we limit it to fifteen minutes, uh, presentation, fifteen minutes Q and A, knowing that we potentially are gonna have somebody push the line a little bit. And that's just my suggestion.
Um, Mr. Harris, um, the analysis that each one of the analysts are going to be doing prior to us actually having the presentation, you're, you're proposing that that work is gonna be done within the first week after receiving the budget from the...
Yes, ma'am. If you've gone through the big schedule, there's a week that says chief of staff analysis, it's not here, it's not. The first week, yeah, the first week, that's what we've been doing. We're working on getting all that analysis and all that those items, so that when you come into the work sessions, you have all the number generations and, and, you know, you know how we...
Okay, let me ask you a question as far as to that. Uh, the first week when you're doing your analysis, the second week when you actually receive your presentation. When will we receive the analysis, we will receive the analysis for those specific, uh, presentations? When do, when do we receive those, and is that a session where we actually have an opportunity to review those with you guys before the presentation, or is this just background information for us to use as a product?
Uh, what we can do, if you look on the first, what we're hoping to do is, uh, you see, the first work session isn't until Tuesday. Uh, we anticipate having a package ready for the full council, having that ready, the organization developing to give to you. Uh, and then as part of our session on the seventh, you see, we include a macro analysis and trends as an hour block, where the chief of staff will be presenting big issues for you, and so you have, you know, that day you get the printout from us, and then the next day we'll kind of walk you, and if I rethink the key issue, then you can also ask those questions before the department's actually started.
Okay, so you need to show me in the... On the sixth, are you saying that we're gonna get the analysis, the entire council?
Yes, ma'am. We kind of little packed together with our macro gems and our, and discussions, and then our...
And so then, for each session that is held for presentation, are you saying that there's going to be an hour before presentation for us to review those transfers, or just...
No, we're saying, we give, when you come in the seventh, you're gonna have the full package for every department.
Okay, so the hour before the seventh is for the entire budget, not...
Right, right, but two fifteen and three fifteen is total budget issues from chief of staff perspective. And what we're, what we're planning to present on Tuesday, we've already given to you on the sixth, so that, you know, you have time to read it that morning. Because I know you love reading these numbers as much as I do. So hopefully, how those are available, then when we come in on the seventh, staff will then spend time...
You should, I want you to be able to get what I'm saying, okay? Um... There's a lot of information that we're trying to cover in the original, for the time of the original presentation. And there's a lot of work that the staff is doing in regards to what we're gonna be reviewing, that you're gonna provide us with the analysis prior to. Um, what I'm asking is, for each work day that we're gonna have, on the seventh, the eighth, or ninth, we're gonna have different departments that are coming in. Is there time allotted that we will have a pre-review or analysis prior to the actual department coming in? Because I think if we did that, that may minimize some of the kinds of questions that me, we may have to ask during the presentation, and we may be able to get through this more successfully, um... As a part of that process, if we have the time upfront to do that, and I'm asking is that part of the planning schedule...
We can work that out at that time, doc. Now, would you like it before each department, or to start the day with, with all the departments?
I think, no, we have all of them, I want you guys to make a presentation on all of them that are coming before us, up front. Then we'll have them make that presentation, then they'll prepare us to be ready to, uh, not ask questions that have already been answered, and we can move forward. Mr. Tyler?
If I may, ma'am, chair, maybe, uh, I, it would be good, perhaps, that even though we're supposed to roll out of here any day at four-thirty, that I would suggest, in a, in a suggestion, that perhaps we have thirty minutes or forty-five minutes at that point where you go over the next day's stuff before we meet with those departments. Does that make sense?
So you're saying before thirty, we, we've scheduled it for two to five?
Yeah, well, okay, so for, at five o'clock, we take thirty-five, forty minutes, and just have you guys sit down and prep us for tomorrow, so that I can go over them when I start reviewing the information. I have the information that you've given us. Does that, does that make any sense?
We can do it either way.
Okay, I, I just, I mean, getting it right before I walk into chambers, I may find myself wanting to think about things and need some time to think about their comments, because I know how thorough Mr. Harris is, and I appreciate it, and, uh, what is worth...
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think we're trying to get to the same goal.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, and, and so whether it's, you know, and I, I, I think that's added value if we get it at the end of our presentation, uh, the day's work, we get prep for what we're walking into the next day, gives us twelve hours to stay up all night and send emails all night long, all night. That's what we're gonna be doing, so we don't want to miss this party. This is a twenty-four-hour party we're gonna be having for another month.
We can understand what you're saying, but having gone through this before in terms of the time that the staff is gonna need to get work together, and since we have these three, three days rolling together, staff only has time in the morning to make sure we've got everything right for the afternoon. So we'll just fill it with time, make sure we've got the schedule, understanding one in advance of the next day, and we'll try to work to make that happen for you. But we've got three days running consecutively, and knowing the amount of stuff, typically, we're gonna take the time away from the meetings to do our work. Now, if we don't have that time, folks are gonna be dead tired in the evening trying to keep prepared for the next day.
Okay, alright.
So we're gonna...
I, then I would suggest that, Mr. Harris, you've heard our heartbeat as people are looking for...
Yes.
We're basically wanting to ensure that we have the benefit of new analysis prior to the presentation. Uh, if it works out at the end of the day, when we add another hour onto this, or we're doing it prior to, I think Mr. Tyler makes a good recommendation. Uh, it does give us a little bit more information to review when we go home at night and continue to work, because we'll all be partying together, we'll all be tied together, and we'll all be staying up together, so, uh... So if you all would just factor that in, and, and synchronicity, that's time to accomplish, doesn't it? Okay. Alright, so back to my...
You have just the times, but pretty much same for me.
Right, back to the original question that I want to, uh, get, to have the, uh, committee pay a little bit of attention to as well. In looking at, uh, Mr. Sanders, uh, looking at the particular departments in this, uh, Ross County, as well, partners that we're recommending by the week, if there is a department that we feel needs to come up early or on the schedule, or there's real severe heartburn, um, then I would like for us to at least talk about that now, so that we can make it. Because what I would like for this committee to do is adopt this work plan, so that we can move forward with the vacation to the department. The files, Mr. Sanders?
Being you as a committee, I do have one question. In, in week three, we're looking at the Richmond Public Schools, Human Services and Social Services, Police, Fire, Sheriff, Commons, Attorney, Public Works. All of those play incredibly important roles in the citizens of Richmond. Is there a reason they are in the last week instead of the first or second week?
I can tell you from a staff perspective why they're in the second week. Those are the ones that take the most analysis. Um, because of their volume and because of the amount of money and the amount of detail, and so what we tried to do was, uh, kind of, consider that the first week, we got a lot of analysis, and a lot of big ticket things, and kind of macro analysis we have to do, and kind of our department level kind of wrote that first week's kind of, kind of secondary, kind of...
Balance it, we just kind of balance it with...
Right, and so that we have at least another week to kind of really make sure we understand those big departments, and to make sure we have had time to really talk to those big departments about things that are missing. And what we might do, tentatively, thinking along those lines, whether we may not do every department up front, what we may do is simply stagger, uh, these, our departments, based on those weeks that might loosen us up a little bit. That way, the staff will be trying to get it all smashed into one week, and then we can spread it out for two weeks, and then say, okay, for the departments, as they're listed, that's when their analysis is due before the committee, and that will give you fresh, give you fresh, and not everybody trying to give everything done, saying that's not like another way to do it. So the second week, those big, big departments will have two weeks of, to actually do their analysis before we do the presentations. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Ross, you have it?
Thank you.
Okay, then with that, uh, before we move on to the next, um, review of the, some of the kinds of questions that we've, uh, finished this part of the presentation. Um, can we have, uh, consensus of the committee to support the, um, work session schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's it? This is the work schedule, and we can go on and have that ready to present to the full council as well, so that all the council members will know what our schedule is.
And, um, we'll also still work on, once we get all of this laid out, didn't get, we do have an outlook calendar, that we're gonna make a build of everywhere, where everyone can actually physically go into outlook and actually see at all times the full calendar, so we'll hopefully have that available, send it by email.
And I guess the, the only thing that I want to say critical about this decision that we're making is, does this give the clerk authorization to go forward with the advertisement of these, in these work sessions? Or we would have to approve this, I don't know.
Maybe the attorney can answer that, or you know, these are work sessions, I don't think you have a book. And how that, how that looks.
These are the dates that you set, and then you'll be settled by Thursday afternoon.
Okay. Alright, good.
The other, the other week is, will be outlined at the end of page one, and kind of two, these kinds of things we expect the departments to come back with in terms of the fifteen minutes, and we may shorten that, um, based on how normal it is, fifteen minutes, but the goal was to try to give, to try to see if we pull out some information that we can't find in the documents, or say, really try to explain why more so, rather than just giving us numbers, because we know the numbers, we know the numbers, but we don't understand why more in depth, like, for example, why this department is necessary, why UFTs, what's the life of this program, is it gonna be a continuous program at one time, et cetera, et cetera, so those types of things. Um, so we often go with... One, one thing in particular, note, two things that we particularly want you to note is letter page and I, uh, fees for services, uh, if there are any changes in fees for services from various departments, they will be issuing a paper along with the budget request. So rather than having to look at those separately, what we're going to ask the departments is if they have any changes in their, at that time, they will come in and explain why those fees are going up and then give you the information at that session so we don't keep bringing folk back and forth. And then we can just a lot of follow-up, I shall directly once we get the initial information. Then also I, uh, which we, I don't recall was really addressing last year, but having looked at the CAFR and some other issues that have come up, we know that there have been some issues with some of our special revenue funds, a lot of it has been the fact that the state, state funds had, had dried up and so we want to make sure going into the budget season that we understand the full impact of what it's going to be for the general fund, if there's going to be more money due for special revenue projects.
Two questions. One is whether or not we want to add to that, whether or not there are any recent artists that have been done and any findings that have not been addressed and how they're going to address those. Um, and the other thing is whether or not the, I don't, I don't know how the budget is going to be presented as relates to inclusion of any stimulus funds or not and whether or not, I just want to throw that out there because I have no idea as to come to us. Okay? Mr. Tal, anything else that you'd like to speak out? You sure?
Well, I, I, I'll get one now. Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris, are you going to do me a favor and, and find out all the, and I can't remember the line I do this, but it's my favorite one, it's like thirty, thirty-one or something, dealing with, uh, consultants and all the little outside games that get stuck in that one.
Planning a management services-
Oh, thank you, is that what it's called?
Yes, we will have the detail of that by your department, by program.
By program, break it down so that I can, uh, see where we're going before-
You already get access to that information once, as soon as budget releases the, the, the system, we can download it from Excel.
Okay, good, because that's, that's brutal.
And we will have your favorite report ready.
I appreciate that.
All right, anything else? All right, cool. Can we turn on the speakers? The speakers, can we turn on?
There'll be no other budget items. Um, if you look in your finance standing grid package, at the very beginning, it's the work plan. I keep putting, I don't know. This doesn't go in this binder.
Everything goes in the binder.
No, this binder's for budget. But if you want holes, we can, we can, we can put those in and then we'll go. Uh, we sent this to you, uh, via email from yesterday and hopefully, uh, just to quick. What we basically was taking the retreat items, we took, you know, recurring work and we kind of meshed it in terms of what we thought was probably kind of followed with the chair. Um, it's a quick, quick, quick snapshot, basically once, from now to the end of May, budget, budget, budget. Uh, then in June, going back, making economic development a priority again, uh, and keeping that on the, on the, on the radar. Uh, and so, uh, we talked to economic development, they're looking at, uh, hopefully implementing an actual software program that will actually help do the kind of benefit cost analysis that we anticipate with regard to economic development costs. So, so hopefully they'll be able to talk about that. We've also spoken with, uh, professor at VCU who's talking, who has some, um, some thoughts concerning regional economic development options, which, uh, he's willing to, Dr. John Agarbino, which is willing to, uh, suggest to the council and the mayor. And then also asking the proper task force to come back and give an update to this committee at that point. So that whole session will be economic development. Then in July, jumping at two of our priorities, the county committee's priorities, uh, we'll obviously do a media review to say, okay, for the rest of the year, um, about on target where you want, where you want to be. And then putting an outline and possibly a resolution for a council budget policies and procedures manual and then revisiting the fund balance and reserve policies, uh, particularly and also relating that to what the mayor has proposed regarding the region of what AAA, so we all that, trying to put it up front so we can begin to think about those long-term. Uh, then in September, two key items, cost benefit analysis for long-term contracts and then looking at tax relief, which we'll talk about in our staff report, recommendations between, uh, our staff and the finance department is to look at all tax relief programs and all tax incentive programs, do a whole scale review of them in September and then that with any recommendations or change that need to be done, those can be done before January one, that way they can be implemented before the next budget.
Mr. Tal?
Um, Mr. Robinson and I have, uh, been, uh, working or have had dialogue about, um, the ordinance that was, that, within the mayor's budget, they were looking at nonprofits in terms of how much tax relief they were receiving, et cetera. Um, the question is, is that, is that going to be the time that we're going to take that up?
Nonprofits.
As nonprofit service charge, thank you.
Actually, that's coming up, what you intended is an actual ordinance?
I, I understand, but there's going to, that's going to take care of this year-
Right.
-and we're going to have to deal with it on subsequent years. So is this the time in September, we're going to take it up in September?
We can take it up and whatever time the committee wants it on there, we're going to.
And you know what makes the suggestion, don't take it up as, as soon as possible so that these organizations, we've made a decision prior to these organizations doing their budgets.
And, and I, I, that's why I was wondering, you want to say, just kind of, you know, I saw it, that maybe we want to move that up into June or July, uh, and get it off the table before we get to August.
Okay, well, I might need a more worked out.
All right.
Then in October, economic development, we have particularly workforce development and business recruiting attention focused on a few of those in the city, uh, the goals set there. And then in November, CAFR has to be presented to council by November twentieth, uh, also a quarter review. And then we're hoping to do a whole scale review of all financial management policies and we're recommending that either the committee or the full council might consider doing a finance retreat where we can do more in-depth analysis of those policies along, hopefully along with the manager's team and come up with some concrete, uh, things to enhance the financial policy of the city. And then come the holidays, uh, hopefully our goal as a staff is that come January one, uh, we be able to have before council an official policies and procedures manual that will govern the council during the budget and this management, they will all go on for the holidays, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris, I appreciate that. Um, we take the work of the staff, um, as well as the committee and designate time for retreats and putting together work plan. I think we've got a very, a very comprehensive work plan that covers some of the critical areas that we need to focus our attention on and, um, it is a work plan and as is necessary that things come up, that we need to amend it, to get things in, we can make those adjustments as we go through the process, Mr. Harris. Okay, I think that pretty much does it for the informal work session. Uh, we've got running time, about ten minutes, twelve minutes or so, um, less, take a three-minute break and start at four.